So now, we have a victim witness unit. This is something that this DA's office has never had before. I also had to restructure the prison prosecution. I had to separate the budgets, staff assignments, and financials so that employees are no longer signing under penalty of perjury dated work that they actually didn't do. That was something that was brought to my attention right away by the ladies from -- that do the prison prosecution, and I had to address that, and it took a couple of months to sort it all out and get it handled. I've also had an additional deputy DA hired because of caseload. Thank you very much. I appreciate it, and we need it, as you can see.
Stacy, can I interrupt you? Going back to the prison cases, I mean, do you guys have to -- do you guys do that yourselves, or does the state have their own?
The state reimburses us for our prison prosecution. We have Dan Howe as our special prosecutor for the prison prosecution. He handles all of those cases, but the state gets reimbursed, and we have to do detailed -- he keeps detailed time studies, and so do the secretarial staff that work on those cases, and so all of that time is reimbursed by the state.
Okay. You want to get back to the first part of the question? That's fine, yeah.
When I came into the office, there were no department policies, including no Brady policy, and I understand you guys are not lawyers, but it's not legal to not have a Brady policy. We now have a Brady policy. I'm working with ICE to make sure that we can deport illegals who break the law, and as I already mentioned, we have this wonderful new program that can run reports and keep statistics. I do attorney meetings and staff meetings. I'm also responsible for advising the civil grand jury if they have questions. I speak every year at the high school, on the panel that teaches the youth about the juvenile system. I have taught at the college. I also speak at many committee meetings, including Republican and the Tea Party Committee. My office has undergone to participate in the Watka Mile. I was the keynote speaker in 2015, Safe and Same Halloween, Children's Fair, and, as Chris Gallagher mentioned, the Courage Worldwide. We want to participate in those community outreach programs, because not only does it benefit the community, but it lets people know that we have a victim witness program that is able to serve them if they are victims of crime. If we cannot get out and participate in programs, people don't know we exist.
Have you had any luck with that victim witness restitution for the victims, too? I mean, isn't that part of that?
We -- yes, it's -- we actively participate in seeking restitution for victims. It's a standard order that we ask for the court for restitution for any and every victim that's been a victim of a crime. I also have a DA website. We also do a quarterly newsletter, and it allows for the public to ask questions and get input. Unfortunately, right after I started, the county lost its funding for the narcotic gas force, and that's why we did the Jagburn grant. So enforcement with drugs is very difficult to do. I am also working on putting together a bad check program. We are working with the previous administration to try and get the old bad check program wrapped up. There is still a lot of work to do, and there is restitution that still has to go out to victims that have not been made whole because that program is not completed. And as soon as that is done, then we will get our new bad check program into effect. I know a lot of local business owners are anxious for me to start a bad check program because it was something that I strove to do and I promised to do when I was running for office. Next, some of the problems that we face, we have constant attorney rollover because this is one of the lowest places, lowest paid places to work for attorneys in the state of California, and we're in a remote location. But I am proud of them. We have a very cohesive staff now. We have attorneys that need training, but we are a very cohesive team, and I am proud for all of the work that they put in. We work very hard to try and keep the people in this county safe. I use my personal vehicle whenever I go anywhere. The only time I charge for miles is when I go to a training that's out of town. I have a lot of difficulties. I have to fight for everything that I get, and it's not easy. I've had other department head say, "Oh, Stacy gets everything she wants." I don't get everything I want. I ask for what I have, and there are still a lot of things that we need that we don't have. We've had an increase in homicides. We've had Benjamin, Romero, Minor, Bates, and I'm still arguing Shelton in Mendocino County. That's the 36-year-old case that we've had to revisit. We have numerous child sex abuse cases which are complicated and difficult to prosecute. There's been an increase in those types of cases as well. I've also had many, as any department head has had to deal with. I also have my fair share of employee issues. But as you can see from the chart, this is where we're at.
Stacy, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
The headings on that chart, what's M-I-S-D?
Misdemeanor. Yes.
I-N-F-R.
And if you'll notice here on the chart, it looks like there's a dramatic drop-off. Let me just clarify, that's because we still have cases that are pending review. We are having a very difficult time keeping up with the review of the cases because they commit so quickly. And if this board would like to know, I'm happy to delineate the reason for the increases. The case of crime has changed drastically in California. We've had Proposition 47, which reduced any number of cases from felonies to misdemeanors. What does that mean on a practical level, besides the fact that these people are not being punished as felons? The bail schedule has been reduced, or they're being cited out or released on their own recognizance. So do you know what that means? When your constituents come to you and say, "Why are these people still out on the streets?" That's why. They're not staying in custody to stay out of trouble. They're not staying in custody. So the people who are addicted to methamphetamine are out, and heroin now, we have an increase in heroin here in this county. These people are out over and over and over and over again. And because of the decreased penalties, when they are punished, they don't stay in custody. They don't get -- their punishment is misdemeanor level, a year or less in the county jail. We have realignment, which has brought all kinds of problems to this county. We've had Proposition 57, and I thank you so much Supervisor Hemphill for attending my speech on Proposition 57. I actively campaigned against that, and if it was only in Lassen County, we would've won. We defeated it here in Lassen County. Unfortunately, because we are a small population, we did not defeat it statewide. People do not stay in custody. Proposition 57 has also decreased penalties. People who are being convicted of multiple crimes are serving a primary term. The system of credits is ridiculous. People are serving 50% of their time, and they get good time every time they participate in some kind of class. And I won't continue to go on with that. But if you wonder why the crime numbers are up in Lassen County, that's why. Additionally, we seem -- we were just talking about the marijuana issue, and I'm sorry that there were a lot of people that came into this county who were criminals to grow marijuana that now we've had to prosecute them for crime. I have had, on at least one occasion, I had a gentleman who was from Minnesota who brought his wife and child, I don't think it was his actual biological child, out here to grow marijuana, and we had to prosecute him for domestic violence. They have come out here, and they have brought their problems. We have also had to prosecute environmental crimes, because people are tearing up creek I have expressed to the supervisors on a number of occasions, the calls that I had gotten from ranchers who were having cattle stolen, they'd been basically accused of lying. Whether or not that's true, I don't know. I have yet to get a report for a theft of cattle, but it's hard for me to believe that a rancher would call me just specifically to lie. So in any event, you can see the numbers for 2016. The total cases charged, 1,686. That is a record.
Can you please go across the top of that top chart? Do you have felony, misdemeanor?
Juvenile.
Infraction?
Infraction.
What's VOP?
VOPs are violations of probation. When somebody goes out on probation and we discover that they have violated that probation, either because they have not complied with the term, or they have violated a new law, we have to prosecute it as though it's a new case. The other thing that's not included in here are the felony VOPs, and those are not in here because the -- haven't quite figured out how to track those just yet, but probation -- the probation office files those. And when they file those, then our office is obligated, we have the burden of proof. So felony probation files it because they're tracking their probation, but my office has to prove them, and those are not in there. The other number that's not in there is the number of rejections, and right now, our estimated number of rejections for 2016 is somewhere between 400 to 450. So on top of the number that we have, the 1,686 number, we also have all those cases that we've had to review, investigate, and we've rejected because there was not enough evidence, or a victim chose not to testify, or something of that nature. So you can see that our numbers are high.
What's the total number of the -- what is it, like 3,400?
Yeah, something -- it's -- I'm sorry, I did not add it all up.
That's just kind of what it looks like.
That's 2,000, it's 2,022 to 2,400. Right now, I have approximately 200 cases or so to review that are sitting in bins and on my floor. They come in constantly. Last year, the public defender also got a new person, because it was only fair, but if I got a new person, the public defender should get a new person. We have the burden of all the cases. I pulled up a ratio, and I can present this at a later time because I know we're running short of time. Our county has the highest ratio of public defenders to district attorneys. Most counties who are similarly situated don't even have a public defender office. They contract out services. So I would strongly urge this board to please take all of that into consideration when voting on this money that we're asking for, for Mr. Howe. We need his help. We need all the help we can get, and we have a young staff, and he is helping to train them. I cannot do it all. When I hear that there are layoffs going on in probation and other departments, it's really sad and it's appalling to me, because there are so many other places that that money could come from. With that, I have to -- if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I conclude this for now.
I would just like to say something, Chief Probation Officer, Agent Baruchan. I would just like to say, you know what, we all have numbers. We all have data. I know that we haven't filed that many violations of probation. We all have a heavy workload. As department heads, we do a lot of things. We give our time. We give our time not only to our departments, but we give our time to this community, and we give our time to this county. And what we also do is we work with very little, because we don't get those allocations. We don't get state funds. We, you know, all clamor for the general funds. And I'm going to say that there are issues out there that are bigger than some of these. There's CalPERS, there's IHSS, there's the Board of Equalization misallocation. That money is going to have to come from somewhere. I briefly looked at some of those amounts, and they are huge, and we have to come up with ways to look at paying those, on top of not being able to hire staff, because we all have similar problems. And what I'm going to say is that, yes, we did sustain layoffs, in not only my department, but in other departments. So when you look at allocating general funds, you have to remember good business practices, not an emotional plea. Every case is different, and every case is hard. We look at these people, we live with them, and we deal with them every day on probation. But you know what? We do what we can with what we have. Thank you.
And I would just like to add to that that we deal with the victims. We deal with the real fallout. We deal with the victims that have to face, especially in this particular case, a lifelong -- it's almost worse than murder. Being sexually assaulted is almost worse than being murdered, because you have to live with it every day for the rest of your life. And what we're trying to do is to put this guy behind bars for the rest of his life, so he does not have a chance to do this to someone else. And that's all I have to say.
You're right, and as a society, you know, we're all tasked with the responsibility of helping those who are in need and those people who can't really be held accountable. You know, it's -- and this stuff up here for us, you know, as it's said by the honorary, you know, we're a fiercely conservative county and board, and he really appreciates that. At the same time, we're there for a reason, because we have to make some hard choices, and we rely on staff to go beyond and do the extra work and make the executive commitments. You know, and I appreciate the fact that you're here, Stacy. At least we would've had more time, and you had more time to go over the -- your PowerPoint presentation looks very interesting. And you're right, I did go to your office, and, you know, to help as a PR move so that the board, the newspaper, the radio, the rest of the community can see what it takes to run the DA's department. It is not an easy task. It is not hard, and it is often thought of as some glamorous position, or you have a lot of power, or anything else, and that's not the case. And it's -- we all have to work together on this, you know, and as you very eloquently stated, you know, the times have changed, and they're not what they used to be, and they're forever involved with the realignment, the new propositions that pass, and the changes. I mean, you can see it on your graph with your curve, the changing laws is -- it's amazing. And I'm doing glad you got your new computer, because it made the device go print off of things. You know, and you have your case report, and at the top here, you have a, you know, like the Highway Patrol, the CHB, Lassen County Sheriff, and the Police Department, but you have a blank line above that. I was just curious on who that was.
Those were cases that struggled through from the previous crimes that were unallocated. They're cases that were filed, but for some reason, when the case with the system was transferred from crimes to carpe l, they didn't come through as to which agency it was. So they're just up there as -- that the cases exist, but we don't know which agency they came from.
Okay.
Yeah.
So DUI, it's --
Yes.
You have, what, six cases, but you're not exactly sure who that was?
Exactly.
And so a DUI, just to add for my clarification, that is both drug and alcohol?
Uh huh.
Okay. And then you have the number of cases and the number of charges. Those are two different -- two different numbers. Can you explain that to me a little bit?
Yes, let me just pull that out so I can take a look at it and see exactly what it is that you're talking about.
I mean, it's said on all of them, but I'm just using that for the second page.
So we've got a breakdown of how many per agency?
Right.
How many felony cases? How many non-felony cases? Oh, thank you. Oops.
And that gives you a total number of cases, and then across the line?
Yes, and that's the total number of cases charged are 342.
And so what determines that difference? That's what I'm looking at.
The difference between the number of cases and the number of charges?
Yeah.
Michelle, if you could come here just to make sure I'm interpreting this correctly.
So cases can be charged with more than one charge. That's what that is. So we could have one individual who has three counts, and so each count is a charge.
Okay. So just to make it easy, and we'll just go up to CHB. There's two cases with four charges.
Correct.
So those two guys, just for discussion, those two guys have two charges each. Is that an easy way to do it, because there's two cases and it's four charges?
So there would be two individuals, two separate cases, with four charges total. So it could be one individual is charged with one, and another individual is charged with three.
Or two, and two.
Correct.
Thank you for that, Clarence.
Thank you.
Because I was trying to figure that out. Does anybody else have any questions? Well, yeah.
No, just one voice. Big deal.
It is. Do you have any questions, Chris?
No, I'm just happy to see the numbers, and I know from working with the DA's in previous positions that it's a very tough job. Not to mention, do they get passes from the people who are being charged, but you can have the police chief or the sheriff call up and yell at them for other reasons. So, you know, that's not an easy position to be in, and...
No, and with the numbers being what they are, it's very difficult right now.
I appreciate the presentation also.
You're very welcome, and I thank you so much for hearing me before the board takes a lunch break, but I have many, many things to address, and I know you're busy as well. Thank you for hearing me before you went to lunch.
I got a couple more questions.
Sure.
On the -- with the changing of everything, and I'm wondering if that's why, you know, the juveniles, their numbers seem to be dropping dramatically. Now, what do you attribute that to?
The number for the juveniles have sort of been waxing and waning. A lot of the juveniles that were in the system, it's difficult for me to say for previous administrations, because I was not there. I see what the numbers are, but I've also heard comments from different people that there were not as many cases that came in. Also, we get cases that we have -- that come in that we can't file for one reason or another. There are many, many different reasons why cases get rejected, but this is where our juvenile numbers are currently.
Okay. I just didn't know if some of them involve --
Yeah. It goes up and down. It fluctuates.
And then I'm just assuming with the probation violations from 2007 to 2012, there was zero, and the same with the prison from 2007 to 2009, that that's just old information that isn't put into your program?
That's right. Yes. I would not even begin to purport to say that there were no violations of probation in 2007.
Okay. And then I guess my next question is, what are we doing about fish and game and the violations from there? Because the Fish and Game Commission, they run on fines and fees collected through the --
I just had this discussion yesterday with Nick Butler in this meeting that I had yesterday. He advised me that the actual Fish and Game Commission are not necessarily funded by the tickets that they write. It's the advisory committee that receives that money. When I first started, I was not aware of that. I didn't know that. Nobody told me that. It's not something that is common knowledge coming from another county that didn't -- I never really dealt with fish and game code violations before. I had a misdemeanor deputy that we talked about, we actually had some cases that go through diversion, because these people are typically not criminals. Usually, the people that are in the system for fish and game violations are there because they haven't filled out a tag correctly, or they didn't tag something that they were supposed to tag. Oftentimes, they are what would, under different circumstances and in a different code section, be considered a very low-level offense. When I learned that, when I was finally made aware of the fact that the advisory committee, that's where they get their monies from, we had taken a different approach with those cases. Knowledge is power, and so we learn sometimes by mistake what we have to do differently. Sometimes, it's not that these cases are never eligible for diversion, however, we are ensuring now that if we consider that somebody would be eligible for diversion, we are making sure that all the fines and the fees and the penalties are collected so everybody has the funds that they need to do what they have to do before a case is considered for dismissal.
Okay. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Because, you know, with the fishing derby, it's also on the end of the day, and that's...
Absolutely. And, you know, this job is sort of, it's a puzzle. And as I've gone through, I'm only two years into my portion of my term, and every day I learn something new, and it's -- every day is an adventure, and every day, one piece of -- one more piece of the puzzle falls into place. And one of the things about me is that I am not one who never admits that I make a mistake, or that I don't think I know everything. And if something is brought to my attention that needs to be addressed, or needs to be corrected, I am always willing to listen, and I am always willing to take remedial action if need be.
Yeah. I don't know, it's just very interesting to see all this stuff, and I'll just come up to one other question.
We really could talk about it all day.
We could.
Yes. There's really so much information that it could be...
And I would certainly like to, you know, maybe request with Richard, you know, if you can work with Richard, maybe even get this agenda, see if you can go over your PowerPoint presentation at some point.
I would be happy to do that.
I think that would be good. You know, I guess, you know, looking at all these charges and all the caseload you've got, I mean, just out of curiosity, I mean, how many of these, I mean, do you have to go to trial with, go in front of a jury trial in front of a jury?
Well, that's another very difficult question. We try to resolve as many as we can, because we have a very limited jury pool here in Lassen County. That was another thing that I have never had to deal with before until I became the District Attorney of Lassen County. Others might say that it's not my problem, I don't have to worry about it. We set for trial cases that we feel like need to go to trial, but we do try to resolve what we can because of our limited jury pool. We also have -- we're in a situation right now where people are not showing up for jury duty, and we have probably about a 40% show rate. And so we are up against very difficult, difficult times. We also have a misdemeanor judge who doesn't want to hear jury trials, who bullies our office to try to get cases dismissed, and doesn't follow the rules of court, nor the rules of evidence. So we are up against so many different challenges right now. Normally, I would not say that, but we're at a point in time where this office is facing so many unprecedented challenges. It's difficult. We're getting it from all sides, and we're -- it's difficult for us to proceed on all levels. But if we have a case that needs to go to trial, then it will go to trial, and the court will have to figure out where those jurors are going to come from.
Ruth, I mean, how many did you have last year?
I don't know. I don't know. I don't think I could estimate at this point. I'd have to run it. Yeah. So that I give you a fair number. I don't want to guess.
Oh, just out of curiosity.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, do we also have anything? I mean, I'd like to have you come back again and finish up the presentation in more convenient time, maybe if you make a time certain, Richard, and maybe like...
Okay. Will we also be postponing the vote for the amendment to the contract? I noticed that that's on there. I thought we had...
Well, that's on, or, yeah, I don't know, I just got caught up in all the minutia. I don't know what it is. Yeah, I mean, it's all minutia, but I mean, it's very interesting stuff.
Right.
And I think you all will find a diversion program also very interesting, once we have a chance to present that.
And the amendment to the contract is already been approved last week, right?
Okay, thank you. That's -- when I looked at it, that's what I thought, but then I thought, okay, what the -- did I miss something?
This was amended precisely the way that the department requested it.
Okay. Very good.
So anyway, yeah, if we can get you to come back, and you can, you know, I got a few more questions about this stuff here that you presented today, but also about, maybe you want to hang out? It'd be awesome.
Okay. Any -- I am happy to come back. I just need to check my calendar and make sure that I am available on that day, that I have meetings for court to attend.
Very awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Very nice.
So how much more have we got to do here?
Before we move on to this item, I just want to make sure everybody understands where we are with this process. Last week, the request was to amend the contract and increase the appropriation. The board elected to amend the contract, ask the DA to work with them in the budget, and come back. And then, so that's where we stand. But the increase in appropriation was not approved of the last board supervisors. That remains unresolved. That's on for today. That is an appropriation to a current budget year requirement. There's a forfeits code requirement under the County Budget Act, 29,000 of them.
And just for public knowledge, it's a one-time expenditure?
Yes. Yes.
Right. For this case specific?
So the...
What we started, what we started?
So the appropriation, to be clear, the appropriation, if the budget is increased in the amount of $20,000, while the presentation is made on the premise, and I don't expect she would vary from this, the presentation is made on the premise that that money would go for a particular purpose.
Right.
But in the end, the budget amount is increased, and, you know, she can spend it how she wants.
Let me speak to that. It would be allocated in the professional services line item of the DA's budget.
It would be allocated in the professional services line item of the DA's budget. The way it's agendized is simply a request for an increase in appropriation. That would be an incomplete item, okay? The Budget Act requires a balanced budget, and so increasing an appropriation without an offset and transfer of revenue results in, in an imbalanced budget. So if the board's gonna consider increasing appropriation in that fund budget unit, then at the same time, you also need to take the money from somewhere else.
Okay. And you, what, what fund were you looking at?
Uh, you know, um, interesting that you should ask that. We're, in reviewing the overall county budget, and it appears to me that we're, and as you know, we're relying heavily on a vacancy factor in the three major funds, public safety, probation, and general funds. That vacancy factor is, is allocated by fund rather than budget unit, and so, uh, I don't think we're gonna meet that, largely because our salaries, being increased last year, kind of, are a double-edged sword. One, we increased salaries slightly. Two, that increase in salaries made our recruitments much more attractive, and so we have far less vacancies in, in all departments than we once did. So I think we're at jeopardy of not meeting that, um, vacancy factor that we've included in all three of those, um, fun, major funds. So I guess the only, you know, the, the only place I would feel comfortable allocating funds would be from the, uh, reserve, that's in the general reserve budget. Or decreasing expenditure in some other unknown, but I, I don't see that they're out there.
Stacy, what's, uh, the fund number 130-0431?
I thought it was 432, but 431, I guess is what you had.
130-431 is her public safety, district attorney, general operating budget.
Yes.
Of the public safety. Sorry.
Thank you.
Sorry. Me, too.
Thank you.
That's where most of the activity occurs, uh, for the DA function. There are some sub-budgets, but that's the big one.
Actually, I've, I've got a copy of that budget for what it's worth. But here's the...
So the...
Did you need my glasses? How about [inaudible]? The professionals specialized...
Here, do that.
It's not, it's, it's a PDF, it's not a...
Humor me.
So we've got 40,000 originally allocated to that line item, and that's the...
So we're gonna increase that line item by 20,000?
That's the rest.
Now, that's a request out, and we'll do it out of the reserve.
That's up to you guys. I'm not making that recommendation, because I, the budget's very tense right now.
I'll make that motion, I could believe, you know, I'm glad Stacy, you came back and did this, but if they were effective, um, I think we need to take care of these cases that are the most heinous, and also require, you know, action.
Well, we started the job, we need to finish it.
Yeah.
It's all second.
Okay.
I'm down to that first, so we'll do the, we have a motion by Peter and a section by Chris. Is there any other discussion? Anybody from the public?
I'd like to see this go with an unanimous vote, and the reason for it, I hold two titles in this county. I work for the school district, I'm in the chaplain position with Susan River Fire. We just had Courage Tryoffel on at our department. We're a small department. We gave them $2,000 of monies that they needed to do their funding, their program this year, their race. And it was because of a little six-year-old girl that was being trafficked. They showed us 21 of that video, and out of all the firemen that were in that room, guys like me, I'm a tough individual, if you don't think so, see me outside. There wasn't a dry eye in the place. So when she comes and asks for something like that, all I can say from the general public, I'd better hear a unanimous vote.
Can I, can you speak Chinese, please?
It's Daryl McChamber.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the table?
It's hard out to follow.
It is. Uh, okay, if nobody else wishes to speak, then we'll bring it back up here, and, uh, the fourth district order requires, so, uh, Secretary, if you could give a little call here, please.
Supervisor Gallagher?
Yes.
Supervisor Teeter?
Yes.
Supervisor Hemphill?
Aye.
Supervisor Hammond?
Aye.
Supervisor Alba?
Reluctantly, I'm gonna say no. This is maybe an offense to you, Mr. Chambers, of all by any means, but we are in a tough place, and we have departments everywhere needing money and everything else, and I cannot, um, you know, as heinous of a crime as it is, and I've sat on those juries, and they are not, I've been on there for two weeks, and I'm not taking this lightly, please, by any means. And I hope you don't take so, think so, take it that way either, Stacy. I mean, it's not easy. And I'm gonna be building law on this for, for fiscal and financial reasons, for the overall of other departments in the county, because we all, we all have our needs, and, you know, to go into the general fund on this, I deserve, I, I can't leave myself to do. So with that, the, the motion passes by a forfeits vote.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
So we might as well finish things how we're here. Where are we at? We are...
H2.
Two minutes.
Thanks for the [inaudible].
Oh, two-minute break? Two-minute break, [inaudible].